I'd like to call the meeting to order, ask the city council to please take your seats. All right. Thank you and welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting on December 14th, 2010. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Martin with the San Bruno Patch, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I'll help you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few announcements. There will not be a city council meeting on the 4th Tuesday in December. We've decided to take a little holiday break. There will be a town hall meeting this Sunday, December 19th, regarding the Glenview explosion and fire at the senior center right here from 2:00 to 4:00. That's this Sunday. And I believe we have an announcement regarding the January 5th meeting as to the distribution of monies received by the city for the Glenview relief. Would that be Irene, would you like to say something about that, or Michael?
Irene. Okay. Just to reiterate, we will be having a meeting here at the senior center on January 5th at 7:00 PM. Everyone is welcome. We are particularly thinking, looking for input from people about how to distribute the money that was donated to the Glenview fire victims. So if you are interested, or if you are a victim yourself, or you're from that neighborhood, please come to that meeting on January 5th.
Right, and that's not a city council meeting, that's a subcommittee meeting. So, we have some presentations this evening, actually not presentations, but we have some business to conduct. We're gonna, the annual reorganization of the San Bruno City Council and appointment of vice mayor to serve a one-year term. This is pretty much done every year, as a matter of fact, and I believe our new vice mayor is Mr. Michael Salazar. So congratulations, and you can switch seats now, or you can just wait till the next meeting?
We'll wait till the next meeting.
Oh, wait till the next meeting, okay. Also, I would like to move item 10C up, which confirms city council member liaison assignments to citizen advisory committees, if that's all right with everyone. I think you all have the list, and that goes along with the annual reorganization. Review of the agenda, I would like to move item number 11, which is the annual report of traffic and safety committee, to right after item number eight, public hearings. Any other changes on the agenda? All right. Approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 23rd, 2010, and special council meeting of November 30th, 2010. Changes, errors, omissions? All right, they will stand approved as submitted. Consent calendar, item number seven. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before you take action, may I ask that the council remove item number 7D? This is a contract amendment related to security in the Glenview neighborhood. Staff is asking that we pull that item for tonight in order to provide some additional analysis and work on that and return to you with that at a later time.
All right.
So moved.
Need a motion for that?
Second.
Motion second to remove item 7D. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, how about action on the remainder of the consent calendar?
Move to accept consent calendar.
Second.
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so carried. Public hearings, notices have been, sorry?
7D.
No, 7D is just removed until the next meeting.
Yes, please. We would like to bring that back at a later meeting. Thank you.
Sorry.
Public hearings, items, notices have been published, posted, and mailed. We're gonna hold the public hearing, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance of the city of San Bruno adding new chapter 1.35, developer indemnification to title 1, general provisions of the San Bruno municipal code.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Give a report to the council at its last meeting. This is an amendment to the city code that would require a developer to indemnify, defend, and hold the city harmless in case there are any challenges to the development approval. There were, there was an attorney general's opinion in a case in 2002 that allowed the city to do this. It would avoid the necessity of adding a condition to each and every permit approved by the city for the very same thing. So the city is enabled to pass such an ordinance and have this in place. We've seen it in other cities on the peninsula. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Good. Any questions of staff at this time?
No.
All right, at this time we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone in the public elect to speak to the council regarding this item? If we close the public hearing, you're precluded from saying anymore on this item. Any action?
Move to close public hearing, second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. The question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Any discussion, or what's your pleasure?
To the chair, I believe it's pretty self-explanatory. I'd like to introduce the ordinance for adoption.
I'm gonna waive the first reading.
Or move to waive the first reading?
Second.
Motion to waive the first reading, and second. All in favor?
Aye. And I'll introduce the ordinance for adoption.
Councilmember Ibarra.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. We have moved up item 11 to this point in the agenda. We'll now go to item 11, which is the annual report of the traffic, safety, and parking committee. And we do have Vice Chair Eric Wood, who will present the report tonight, and I see Tom Hamilton, a member who's also present.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity for us to address you regarding the annual report from the traffic and safety and parking committee. In 2009, one of our main accomplishments was putting general procedures in place regarding traffic calming measures. Going into 2010, we wanted to piggyback on the work we'd already done. Thanks to staff support, we had the hindsight to, they had the hindsight, really, to want to put procedures in place on how to handle parking-related issues. We noticed we had a number of requests regarding parking-related issues, and so we wanted to put something in place that didn't need our approval on every single parking-related We accomplished this, and the council passed our application and procedures. When we were putting this together, one of our main goals was to be able to give the residents a voice. Not only did we try to think through how to handle most general requests, but we also put, but we also put a way for residents to appeal their applications. So, this is now, you guys adopted this, we've put this in practice, and it's actually working really well. We've had two requests so far that the staff denied, they came to us, and we actually, one of the times, the resident came in, the other time the resident didn't come in, and it was a very good discussion. They could completely understand why we denied the request, they totally understood it, and they actually agreed with us. So it was nice to kind of see something that we adopted, put into practice, and worked very well. Next slide. We also, we also put a traffic calming toolkit into place. DKF associates put this together. We're very pleased with this. It allows a citizen to come in to city hall, and if they have a traffic calming issue, they can actually come in and get the toolkit and look at the tools that we have available to us that they can actually use. And then they can request to put onto our agenda and talk to us about them. And it completely outlines how we go about traffic calming, what measures we have in place, what tools we have available. It's very, very effective. It's very good. You guys adopted it, and we appreciate it, because it also gives us the ability to reference. So when someone comes in, we can actually walk them through it from something that you guys have adopted. Some of the parking-related issues that we did on southbound on Mills Avenue, we removed a portion of it to help for street parking. We, in, on Mason Avenue, they had restricted parking on Saturday, and we removed that. Also, we added a new yellow curb from 8:00 to 2:00 PM. Again, traffic calming measures that had been on our agenda that we wanted to address and that we were able to finally get through. We've did limited-time parking on Genovin. We also, six parking spots for, this again goes back to the other where we implemented the procedures, and we actually had six items that the staff and us, we were able to address right away without even having to come to you guys. So, again, taking stuff away from you that staff can handle themselves. One of the bigger visible items was the stop sign on Cunningham Way at Genovin Avenue. That helped. People were just flying through there and going down the hill, and then they have the momentum from coming off the freeway, and then going eastward down, which is a downhill slope, and then you had a school right there and a church, so it helped slow down the Sneeve Lane west of Skyline, again, mitigated, tried to help mitigate issues in regard to traffic. We had a public hearing on Susan Drive. You guys got, you guys had a, someone, one of the residents came in and was pretty upset about how fast everyone was driving, so we're, I think we're bringing stuff to the council for you guys to look at. 2010, we also saw two TSPC members resign, Sol Weiner and Doris Mays. They'd been with us for a long time. We have two new members, Jessica Barnes Lopez and Tim Fuller, so we're excited bringing on new people. We were able to get people right away. Into 2011, we're really gonna focus on parking, I think. We're gonna look at the downtown area and try to really think through, is there a better way that we can do the parking? Is there things that we can adopt? Is there something that we can help bring forward to you guys that can make the parking down there a little bit better? And I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank this, to thank the staff. Clara, Tina, and Officer Campy have been completely instrumental in helping us. Tina came on this year, and we were able to really start getting through the backlog because she can actually get to the work, and it's been really, really, really appreciated. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions?
No, no question, just comments. Each year that this committee makes a report, it's just amazing the things that you're doing, and I was on the committee almost 20 years ago, and it was just stop signs and red curbs. And now it's pretty complex, and now you have toolkits and guidelines, and there's a lot of continuity, and I think you should be complimented on the achievements and what's mainly the safety that's occurring in our community. Thank you very much.
All right, I'll echo that, too. All of these boards, commissions, and committees do so much that people just don't realize. Voluntarily in the city, put a lot of time and effort in, especially your committee, too, where you're hands-on with, with the people, which sometimes can be a little challenging. And you've done a great job, so congratulate the rest of the committee for us, please. Thank you.
Oh, we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine, public comment on items not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and their action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agenda is pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to adjust the council under public comment? All right. Go right into conduct of business.
Please.
Jim. He'd like to.
If you could state your name for us and...
Good evening. My name's Alan Braun, formerly of 1660 Claremont Drive. My big concern is the subcommittee comment you made a little while ago, January 5th. Okay, January 5th, too late. Okay, that's almost four months since the fire, okay? The money that you have in this fund was relief fund money. That means, key word being relief. I work in the EAP industry, which is where you help people that have problems financially, mentally, physically, alcohol, drug abuse, all that stuff, okay? Waiting four months to have a subcommittee to decide how you're gonna help the people of San Bruno, okay? I'm telling you the same thing I told the Red Cross. It's already too late now. You should be calling people, okay? The Red Cross finally started last week calling people, finding where they're at now, saying, "We need to make an appointment. Come sit with you, see what you need." You've got people out there that have three, four, not myself, kids, okay, who are spending all this money that was supposedly given to them by the, by PG&E to help, that it's gone, okay? They got children, that they're spending all this money because they're in rental homes, they're having to buy all this stuff that they don't have. They need to be given some money so they can go get their kids Christmas presents, maybe buy a tree, decorations, whatever. January 5th, too late. You're talking 121 days almost after the accident. Something needs to be done now. You need to start contacting people. This money needs to be distributed. It's a relief fund, and when you give it to them when people don't need your relief, then it's wasted. So that's just my comment, and I'm hoping you guys will start doing something about it. You need to, do like the Red Cross started. I read the Red Cross riot act for an hour. They started calling people last Wednesday, asking them, "Let us come see you. Let's make an appointment, sit down with you. What do you need help right now?" Because there's a lot of people out there that are hurting, and they need the help. And then, like I said again, it's relief fund money, it needs to be for relief. 120 days is way after the relief. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Since it, since it was mentioned on the agenda earlier this evening regarding January 5th, you should know that, you know, there was an awful lot of group assistance in the very beginning, and we tried to turn that around, and it's been quite an effort to, to get that done, to reach out individually to, to members of the community. There's money still coming in, and it's not just the city's money. There's money in the Lions, I believe the Rotary has money, St. Roberts has money, a lot of entities, and a lot of them have decided to wait because they're not quite sure exactly where it's needed at this point in time. We have a unique situation here in that a lot of this money is being, a lot of the need, in fact, is being backfilled by another entity, and we're not quite sure where that's all gonna, all gonna land. So, the subcommittee, and I don't want to speak for them, but I believe they've decided to, to wait. We just appointed the subcommittee about a month, month or so ago, to wait so that they can get a group of residents that are concerned. Not a large group, but a relatively small group that will represent, in fact, your interest in this. It's not just gonna be their decision, so, you know, it may, for some people, might not move fast enough, but for others, I think it's better to just let the initial shot get over and see where it's really needed, so we just don't start shooting from the hip. So, that's, you know, a little bit of background on that. So, I understand your concerns. I believe Rico and I saw you in the hospital a number of months ago. Right, right.
Through the chair. Mr. Mayor, if I could comment?
Sure.
I can, I can, I can speak for the Lions Club, and I, and I understand what you're saying, and I have the authority to say that we, we, our committee and the Lions Club has collected money, not to the scale of what the city or the Red Cross has raised, but if, if you can be in my contact, or whatever, or, because we have not, we've chosen not to contact the families, and so, you know, for their privacy. And we have a process, and we are, you know, our, our priority is to help the 55 families. Not a lot of money, but if you know of any families that need some immediate need in the next couple of weeks because of the holidays, please contact me, or we'll see each other.
Through the chair, I was gonna say, as far as friends helping friends at St. Roberts, I can also say that there was monies raised that have, are available if there are requests. My understanding is no requests have been made thus far, however, if you do have some insight or some folks that you feel might be in need or need something through the holidays, then please avail themselves to myself or St. Roberts, and that can be addressed as well, for something that may be more immediate, as you're saying, than that. So there are two viable options from good people in this community, because they do want to help. And we want, we know the holidays are going to be tough for many, and we want to be able to be there and do what we can to ease it as, as much as we can.
Just for the record, the subcommittee, Irene O'Connell, council member, and Vice Mayor Salazar.
May I clarify as well?
Yes.
My understanding is that the subcommittee's task was to bring back recommendations to the full council, so we don't have the authority to give money to anyone. We're only bringing back recommendations.
And those recommendations will be not just from the subcommittee, but from the residents themselves, so you're hot to speak up there, because you're on TV, so.
Okay, if that's the case, then, for example, I'll give you an example. When I read, I got into it pretty deep with the Red Cross, okay? My brother-in-law went to the Red Cross, almost two hours, filling out five forms, which was pretty much duplicates and triplicates of the first form he filled out, got $100, okay? After I let him have it, they dropped off a gift card for $1,300, and then they started calling people, okay? The whole, my whole concern is maybe on the city website, have someone put up a page where people can ask for the money, because people are, people are still, they still got, the one thing we do have left, we lost our houses, our cars, everything else, we still have our pride. And when you gotta go somewhere and spend two hours and fill out triplicates and duplicates of forms to ask for the money to be helped, they're not gonna step forward and do it some of them. So, I mean, maybe on the city website post, you know, some, either information of someone they can talk to about how they need, where they can get the help, just to make it easier, because a lot of them feel like they have to beg to be helped, and they shouldn't have to.
No, they shouldn't have to.
As you saw, our neighborhood came together when this happened. Nobody begged anybody for help. Everybody just pitched in and helped each other.
Absolutely.
And my, my main worry is I'm seeing on, on all the pages of the different groups, everybody's talking about, "Oh, let's use the money to build a memorial park, put some benches in." Okay, no, that's not what the money was given for. It's a recovery fund. It's supposed to be to help people who need, I don't care if it's psychiatry, if they need money to get the OD, what's the, you know, the guy that comes out and draws up the plans for your house? An architect. If it's for getting an architect out there, right, or whatever, they should have, there should be something on the website where you can go and say, "Here's a form you need to fill out and submit, make a copy of it, bring it in," whatever, instead of somebody coming and having to spend two, three hours waiting in a line at city hall, or seeing whoever they have to see. So, that's all my main concern is, something needs to get moving. January 5th, too late.
A couple of things you should know. The money in round figures, it's about $380,000 so far, it's still coming in.
Right.
And has not been spent, not a dime has been spent or will be spent until we get recommendations, you know, from, from the group. Number two, the money will not be used to take care of anything that PG&E should pay for, or that the insurance companies should pay for. So we have to be very careful, we just don't start giving it out when in fact there are other entities that should be taking care of you. So we're watching that very closely. I want you to know that. We're, it's not just sitting there and we're letting it, letting it sit. We're, we're letting this thing evolve, because there's a lot of stuff happening, as you know, in the neighborhood, so.
Right. Well, like you said, there's a lot of entities that are in this with, that have raised the money, okay?
Right.
But what I'm saying is there should be somewhere where they can go to one spot and say, "Okay, I need help. What form do I fill out, who I talk to, to see the help?"
That's right.
Now, not waiting till January 5th, because if you get somebody, comes up with a legitimate thing, there should be somebody that could say, "Yeah, we should help this person," not waiting till January. Then there's gonna be a subcommittee, then another month, the subcommittee's gonna decide what to do with the money, then another month, by the time any money's handed out, it's gonna be six months.
No, it's, believe me, it will not be very bureaucratic at all. I see the city manager writing a bunch of stuff down right now, so we'll take care of that.
Yeah, her and I've talked in depth.
Right.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'd like to remind everybody, and I'm sorry, I don't remember what the number is, but there is still a hotline that anyone can access to get directly to the city hall and people who know what's going on. And we do have web, our website up that has links to different things. I'm sorry, I don't know what the number is. Do you know, Connie?
Yes, the city hotline number is 616-7180. In addition to that, we have in place now for about the last 10 weeks, a program whereby we have a number of city staff persons who are directly assigned to be liaison persons with each of, a small number of families, each of the 15 have, a small number of the 55 families assigned to them who are, who have, have been and will continue to be displaced from their homes, either because their home is severely damaged or because their home has been destroyed. Those liaison persons are able to assist in guiding and directing to resources that are available throughout the community by a large number of different providers. I, I think I should probably say that the city is working aggressively to try and develop the means of better coordinate the various nonprofit entities who typically, and have to date acted fairly independently in providing services to residents. And I do understand and have heard the complaint that Mr. Braun indicated about an overly bureaucratic process that some use and expectations that that might engender that, that have not been realized. We are working actively with those, the Red Cross and other organizations to cut that down and see if we can't assist residents in getting better access to those resources which the city does not directly control and, and in some cases, does not have immediate access or knowledge about. In any case, again, the, the hotline number to, directly to the city is 616-7180, and any of the 55 families who need a better connection with their liaison person can contact that hotline number or my office directly, and we can work with them to make sure that they are in direct and ready access to the city of San Bruno, so that we can assist in any way that is possible.
All right, good. Yes, Ken?
If I could just reiterate, we, we have tried to respect the privacy of, of the victims, although we do have contacts through the victims' email group, and I know through the vice mayor and through council member, former vice mayor, that we have sent correspondence from St. Roberts and from the Lions Clubs to that email, to, you know, hoping that it would get to those 55 families, and I know it's more than 55 families, but if there's a better way, we, we'd like to know. So, thank you.
All right, anyone else in public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Bob George. I live in, on Chabot Drive here in San Bruno, and I'm here tonight to present you with an artifact. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the, of HIP Housing, which stands for Human Investment Project, and we're engaged in the process of trying to find housing for residents of San Mateo County who are under privilege. HIP is 35, 38 years old. For the last 10 years, we've been producing a calendar which has become an icon for our organization. It's based on children's art this year from the schools, the elementary schools of Foster City, San Mateo, South San Francisco, and Belmont. Last year, San Bruno schools were included, but I'd like, I have left copies of the calendar with a city clerk. Again, I call it an artifact in this day and age, it's digital calendars and that sort of thing. It is unusual to see a calendar printed on paper, but that's what this is. It's got some very interesting artwork. We had 350 young people from those four school systems, and we whittled it down to 12, because there's 12 months in the year. It's easier than expanding it to 350 months, but anyway, that's, that's why I'm here. I hope you enjoy the calendar. I hope to see them distributed around city hall and my occasional visits. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bob, and HIP does wonderful work in the county, wonderful work. Thank you very much. Anyone else in public comment? All right, go right to conduct of business. Our first item is, A, receive an oral report and review status of local emergency related to the Glenview fire area and adopt a resolution continuing the declaration of local emergency. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a familiar one, I'm sure, in that we have taken this action several times over the last three months since the September 9th explosion and fire in the Glenview neighborhood. You will recall that this declaration of local emergency allows the city to take certain limited actions, particularly the suspension of competitive bidding, in order to respond quickly and efficiently to disaster response and recovery requirements that continue to be...
that continue to be urgent within our community. When I last spoke to you about this a couple of weeks ago, I indicated that the intent was to move fairly quickly to the opportunity to terminate the emergency. At this point, I anticipate that that will occur into the late January, February time period. We are continuing, as I've reported to you before, to want to move through at least the significant wet weather period of this wintertime season in order to assure that we have passed the most critical time period for specific physical activities that contract services might be required to address in the Glenview neighborhood, and particularly as they relate to the stabilization repair of damage in the Crestmore Canyon, that, at the, close to the blast site. There are two items, there were two items on tonight's agenda that relate and, and, that relate to our response to the Glenview situation and have actions that have been or are being proposed to be taken under your emergency authority with the resolution in place. That is the next item, where we will be asking for your authority to move forward to assist a small number of residents whose homes have recently been determined to need demolition and debris removal. And secondly, the item that I asked you earlier to remove from the consent calendar is another example of the type of item that, or the type of action that the city has taken and will continue to be mindful of. This one relates to private security services to facilitate the protection of both the damaged infrastructure area within the Glenview neighborhood, as well as previously the neighborhood and the vacant properties themselves. So, at this point, I'm asking your action tonight to continue by adoption of the resolution in front of you, to continue the declaration of local emergency pending a subsequent action to be presented to you in the first quarter of next year to specifically terminate the emergency. Until and unless you take that action, we will be returning to you on, at, at least, at the minimum thirty-day intervals as required by state law in order to keep this resolution and the declaration of local emergency in effect.
Any questions of the city manager? Any action?
All adopters, introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Item number ten B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Pacific States Environmental in the amount of ninety thousand eight hundred dollars for the demolition of three homes declared total losses from the Glenview Fire.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. At current count, the Glenview Fire has destroyed, completely destroyed thirty homes, as well as damaged fifty-eight more. As the council knows, the County of San Mateo, in conjunction with the State of California, specifically CalRecycle, coordinated the initial debris removal process. And the initial debris removal process included the thirty-five homes that were, that were first destroyed by the fire. There are about twenty or so other homes that are yellow-tagged, which means that they were structurally sound to enter, but they were not safe to occupy. And a number of those homeowners have identified improvements that can be made to those homes in order to eventually make them habitable again. However, three of the homeowners have identified with their insurance companies that these homes are total losses. And what that means is that is, from a cost, cost standpoint, it makes more sense to completely demolish the home and rebuild than it would be to repair the existing structure. These three homes are located at twenty-seven twenty-five Concord, eleven twenty-seven Glenview, as well as nine sixty Glenview. In an effort to expedite and provide a coordinated process for these three homeowners, the same way that thirty-five homeowners did, staff contacted the County of San Mateo, as well as the state, to see if they could handle the process. Unfortunately, they could not, because the funding and resources that were available were only available for the initial debris removal process. So, with that in mind, staff contacted the contractor who handled the initial debris removal con, effort, Pacific Coast Environmental contractors, and asked them for a proposal to demolish the homes. And one thing to keep in mind is, absent us handling the process, this would be something that the property owners would have to handle themselves. However, the initial thirty-five did not, so we thought this would be appropriate, that we handle it for these three homeowners as well. Staff met with the, each homeowner, met with the contractor onsite, took a tour of the site, the state of each condition of home, and received a proposal from the contractor in the amount of ninety thousand eight hundred dollars. The specific amounts for each home are detailed in the proposal, which is attached to the staff report. They're, they're basically the same. All there are, they're all small variations, depending on the, the state of the home, how much debris is there, how much burnt material there is. In addition to the Glenview Fire cleanup experience, Pacific Coast Environmental also has fire cleanup experience throughout the State of California, and do demolition and remediation work as their usual line of business. Of course, we would coordinate with the county health department, as well as the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, closely consult with them to make sure that all environmental laws are met during the debris removal process for these three homes. Regarding the costs, as you could see from the attached letter from PG&E, PG&E, as they did with the initial thirty-five homes, has agreed to advance the funds to cover this contract and cover the contract in its entirety. And finally, if this, if this contract is approved, staff will work with the contractor, as well with the individual property owners, to set up appropriate, an appropriate time to start this demolition work. So, I could take any questions that the council may have.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. Aaron, so, in the staff report, you stated that thirty-eight homes were destroyed by the fire. And then these three would make forty-one homes that will be totally demolished?
Um, no, the, the initial was the thirty-five homes. These three make the thirty-eight total destroyed.
So, and now, the, the overlay zone that we spoke about earlier, the fifty-five homes that are within the overlays. The remainder, so there's seventeen more homes that are yellow-tagged, but uninhabited?
Correct.
Are, are there, is there any chance that they may have to be demolished? Are they still in, being reviewed and inspected?
Yeah, I mean, at this point, these are the three homeowners that we've heard from. We've talked to several of the other homeowners, for instance, the home on Claremont. I believe it's seventeen twenty Claremont, that, that pink home. And they've already demolished part of it, working with their private contractor and their, and their insurance company. So, there are some homes that will have to demolish certain portions of their home. These are the only three that we know were declared total losses, and therefore will have to be completely removed.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff? Michael?
Aaron, in this, in the report, you mentioned that these, these three homes won't require hazardous material removal. Why is that?
Well, there was a specific process that was followed, because the, the amount of ash and burn material that was associated with the first thirty-five homes. This will have to go through your typical Bay Area Air Quality Management District requirements for asbestos removal. One of the homes actually on Glenview already has, that they demoed a lot of the interior. So, that will still have to be complied with. We're gonna consult with the county, but there still isn't the amount of ash that was, that was around when the first thirty-five homes were done. So, there's not the same standards that have to be followed.
Okay. And you also mentioned in there that the initial, the cost for the initial thirty-five homes is not yet finalized. Can you give us some idea of what work still remains to be done for those initial?
Well, I think it's, you know, we haven't been directly involved in that, because that's something that was handled, coordinated by the county and then Pacific Coast Environmental. I think they're just adding up the final costs that were associated with the, so, it's ballpark, one, one million five hundred thousand dollars. It might change by, you know, ten, fifteen thousand dollars, but it's, that's the, that's the estimate at this point.
Okay. And you mentioned that the county basically had oversight for that, the initial project. These additional three, are those gonna fall under the jurisdiction of, of your department, and will you be overseeing the work?
Correct.
Okay.
Although we'll consult closely with, with county health to make sure all the environmental measures are in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Action?
I'll go ahead and introduce a resolution for adoption, please.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. We've already done item ten C.
Item ten D is to conduct an appeal hearing related to award of bid for purchase of mobile and portable radios. What I'd like to do first is ask staff for an overview. Then we'll ask the appellant to plead his case for no more than ten minutes. And then we'll have staff follow-up. Mr. O'Leary, Dan Chee.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council. The subject of this appeal hearing is related to action of the city in reviewing bids that will lead to award of the contract for a mobile and, and portable radio bid. The city's municipal code provides that bids may, shall be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. In practice, two related but separate terms are considered, both questions of being responsible and being responsive. For the mobile and portable radio bid, Williams USA was the lowest dollar bidder. I understand the analysis of this bid found no issue with Williams USA as a responsible bidder. There is no known reason that the firm is incapable of providing the radio's bid at the prices, at the price quoted. However, the finance department determined, with the technical assistance of the fire department, that Williams USA bid was not responsive to the bid specifications. In fact, the department determined that Williams USA bid failed to conform to several specification requirements. Williams USA then requested administrative hearing by the city manager on this determination of nonresponsiveness. The designated hearing officer for the city manager affirmed the findings of the finance department that the Williams USA bid was non-responsive to the bid specifications. Williams USA then requested this hearing before the city council. In order for a bidder to be eligible for award of a bid, the bid must be responsive. And if you have any question, the city attorney would be glad to answer any question on, on this matter. But I, I would say that a responsive bid is one that meets all of the established terms, conditions, and specifications of the bid. An agency has limited discriminate, I'm sorry, that the agency has limited discretion and may only waive minor irregularities from the bid specifications.
Anything else?
The specifications for more, for mobile and portable radios were developed in conjunction with the Millbrae, Central County, San Mateo, and the San Bruno Fire Departments. The specifications, at least in part, were prescribed by the requirements of a grant application submitted by the city to the Federal Emergency Management Agency on behalf of all four agencies. The bid by Williams USA materially deviated from the following specification requirements. That the radios be P-25 compliant, that they have the capability and capacity for five hundred and twelve channels and fifty zones, they have the capability for users to directly select each of the top five channels, and that voice enunciation capability be included in, in the equipment. An agency, or in this case, the four agencies, developed specifications to meet their operational and safety needs. It is impossible for every firm and every product on the market to meet these bid specifications. Specifications, by definition, narrow the possible products to those meeting the operational and safety needs of the agencies. Beyond just answering the question tonight, if USA, if Williams USA is responsive to the specifications, the city council should well have an interest in if the specifications unintentionally allowed only one firm to bid, a sole source, or if the specifications unreasonably or arbitrarily narrowed the possible responses. I believe the facts show that the bid specifications do not create a sole source and are not unreasonable or arbitrarily narrow. I am unclear exactly the basis for the USA, what Williams USA appeal. In the record, Williams USA stated that its bid exceeds your specifications in every way, and in a later email further protests that the radios are completely compliant to, to the city's specifications. Yet, within the sixty-two-page written appeal, appear statements acknowledging that the bid does not meet the specifications. I can say this appeal hearing is not about the city's financial, financial condition or the revenue expenditure imbalance the city council has dealt with over the last several years. In fact, the city council has been extremely diligent in acknowledging taxpayer costs and the costs that, that this city is exposed to over a long period of time. In fact, twelve of the hundred and twenty radios in this bid, twelve of them go to the city of San Bruno. And eighty percent of the cost for these radios is paid through the FEMA grant. The worst financial impact to all the cities would be if the city took action that makes us ineligible for the FEMA grant.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for the overview. Is the appellant here? Would you like to come up and speak? This is a relatively complicated matter. Normally, you get three to five minutes, but I'll give you no more than ten. So, you're on.
How about fifteen?
How about ten? Thank you.
Okay, then I'm assuming that, oh, good evening to everyone. I'm assuming that you've all have received my packet, okay? So, I'm gonna respond to Mr. O'Leary's letter. A couple of inconsistencies in there that I really don't care to bring up right now. But the bottom line is, is that, you know, when this bid was let, I was, and, and the bids we responded to, I was never given an opportunity to meet with anybody in the city, the police department, or anyone else with my numerous emails and voicemails, that I wanted to come by and discuss the opportunities that the ICOM radio equipment would do, and how it complies with the bid specifications. That never happened, no matter how many times I asked everybody. Number one, in Mr. O'Leary's non-compliance, he says, we're P-25 non-compliant. That is not true, and in fact, actually, the Kenwood radio is not non-compliant. In attachment A, right here, which you have in your packet, I emailed Mr. Tellys and asked him, does the radio need to be full P-25 compliant or just merely capable? And he said capable. It would be done, used later on. Now, the difference is, is that ICOM makes a radio that is P-25 upgradable, it's compliant, but it's upgradable later on. So, why spend a thousand dollars now on a radio that you don't have, have to do? P-25 is something you'll never do. It's not mandated by the city, the county, the state, or the federal government, only for federal agencies. If you went P-25, everybody around you would have to go P-25. And you're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars. So, that's, it's a, ICOM came up with a radio to allow people to buy a, a upgradable radio to make them feel better that they could buy it later on. Save yourself a thousand dollars a radio. That's why we're a hundred and nine thousand dollars low on the bid, on the basic bid. So, we believe that we're compliant because of the email from Mr. Tellys advising us that it was a P-25 capable radio. We bid a P-25 capable radio. The cost savings to the city, again, is a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and twelve dollars on the bid. That's the difference in the bid price between the supposed compliant people and, and us. You also stated fifty zones and five hundred and twelve channels. Well, that's another kind of a, something that people put in bid specs that, because they get it off the back of a radio brochure. Five hundred and twelve channels. You don't need five hundred and twelve channels. I've been in the radio business thirty-seven years in public safety, in the Bay Area with Motorola, with many different agencies. San Mateo County Fire Services published document. You have forty-three channels in the whole Bay Area on fire channels. State of California Fire Scope, CalFire, eighty-three channels. That means a total of a hundred and twenty-six channels. The radios we bid are two hundred and fifty-six channels. You got a hundred and thirty left over. What are you gonna do with them? They're not even out there. So, the five hundred and twelve channels, they're really a, kind of a nonexistent type of bid specification. You don't need it. Why are you asking for it? Well, because it was on the back of the brochure, of the Kenwood brochure, so that's what we put in there. We feel that that's a... We feel that that's a, not a good specification to put in there, and it brings you into a radio and makes you more of a sole source type radio when it's something you don't need. Again, you're paying $109,000 more for something you'll never use. P-25 again, the P-25, people are buying the P-25 radios that they don't need to buy because they're not mandated by, like I said, the city, county, or the state. And also, there was a, a University of Pennsylvania survey that just came out about P-25 interoperability and the security, though it's already been compromised, so it's basically worthless right now. Number two is, or number three on Mr. O'Leary's, we're not compliant list is the five-channel direct entry. The five-channel direct entry is a proprietary spec to Kenwood. Nobody else does it. We, however, and ICOM can do that versus, using the channel select knob in a bank to accomplish pretty much the same thing. However, getting back to your bid specs, here's the Kenwood control head. It's got nine buttons on it. It's going to take five buttons for you to do this five-channel operation select, which means you don't have enough buttons to do a bid spec. And here it said you had to have CalFire interoperability. That means a command bank. You have no button for that. By the time you add that, by the time you add the multiple PL select for CalFire to select the mountaintop sites, the scan and delete functions, and the emergency button that were mandatory in the bid spec, you don't have enough buttons left over. So it's, it's worthless. It's, it was put in the bid spec to make it proprietary. Next thing is, is that the, there's a voice annunciation capable on the portable. It wasn't a, a mandatory bid spec, it was an option, state so in the option list. And voice annunciation, in my opinion, is just one of those Gucci kind of things that really nobody cares about. And in the Fire Department, it's probably more detrimental than anything else. When you change the channel knob, it says, "Channel 1, Bank 1." Why do I need to know that? I, I've been a fireman for 20 years. I know what channel 1 and channel 2 is. When they're on a scene in a fire, and there's a lot of hectic going on, and he's changing channels, and it's going to keep saying, "Channel 1, Channel 5, Channel 6, Channel 7." That's something you don't need. It's, again, a proprietary feature of Kenwood, and not worth $109,000. Also on the bid, were options for FM-approved non-incentive and intrinsically safe. Let's take FM-approved non-incentive. FM-approved non-incentive is a federal classification that guarantees that the radio, when you push to talk, to talk on it, doesn't produce a spark. In gaseous atmospheres, methane, propanes, acetylene, dust filings, any kind of gasoline, things like that, which the Fire Department handles a lot of time, from a vehicle accident and the gasoline spill, to going in somebody's home that the water heater's leaking, that's propane all over, or gas all over the place. Reference your PG&E gas explosion. That is a standard feature on the Motorola, or on the ICOM radio. And on the Kenwood, it's a $10,500 option, which was not on the, which was not included in their primary bid. It's an option, as stated on their price list, on their bid. Those are options. Submersibility is an option, which, of course, the Fire Department would really like to have because they crawl through water and things like that during a structure fire. It makes the radio sealed against water intrusion and brings up the life, likelihood of the radio. That's another $21,500 on the, uh, Kenwood. And every two years, you got to spend another $20,160 to get it recertified. Wow. Okay, so now we're up to, uh, let's see here, $163,000 more to get two options that ICOM has standard. It's a no-brainer now. Additionally, when you run with the FM-approved option on the Kenwood, you have to go down to a lower battery. On the bid spec, it said 3,300 milliamp hour. You have to go down to a 2,500 milliamp hour battery, and you lose about three hours worth of battery talk time. That's critical, critical in a fire operation. You don't have time to change batteries. The ICOM is a 14 and a half hour battery. This battery is an eight-hour battery. I've also, with my bid specs, when I submitted my bid, I had all these things highlighted on an Excel spreadsheet for everybody's review, which apparently was escaped. So in conclusion, I would like to say that Williams USA is the lowest responsible bidder. And we're going to save you $153,000, $163,000 and give you a radio that is far superior to the one that was proposed on the specifications. We've got them used all over Northern California, I've got them in the state government, I've got over 200 of them used in Sonoma County in fire departments alone. It's a quality, high-quality radio. It far surpasses the Kenwood radio that was specced out here, and we request that we get the bid. And if, if you need time to consider this, maybe we could call a special meeting, and we can talk about it further. I don't see anybody in the city that's got 37 years' worth of experience in evaluating radio communications, that may have used them for 37 years, that may have talked on them, but they're not degreed, they're not accredited, and really, it's like having a, maybe a city sanitation worker doing brain surgery at Stanford University. How can you evaluate the patient when you know nothing about it? How can you evaluate the radio communications inside and what they do and ignore all of these blaring things and, and spend $163,000 more for something that's not going to be the same? Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions of the appellant? Michael?
Mr. Williams, I'm wondering, Mr. O'Leary stated that in your initial bid, or perhaps your, the initial bid that you submitted did not meet some of those specifications. Did you at any point change the, the model or any of the specifications that you were proposing?
No, I did not.
So your initial bid did, in your, in your opinion, meet all of the specifications?
Absolutely. And the three items that I brought up, which were in his, in his letter response to me that I was noncompliant on, was P-25, when in fact we are, because we were told we could bid a capable radio, which we did. The 512 channels, you got, you don't have 512 channels, what do you need it for? I'm giving you a radio that's, you're going to have 130 left over. There's not that many channels in the United States that you're going to get. So that's ridiculous. The voice annunciation, that was an option, which you're going to pay for. It wasn't a spec. And it's, like I said, detrimental to the, I think, the, the public safety people. I would never have that. And the other one was the, uh, five buttons. If you utilize all those five buttons, you're going to take buttons away from things that you actually need, like your MDC signaling, acknowledgement, your CalFire command bank, which you're supposed to have, or she can't go to a CalFire fire and get money, and your multiple PL select for site selects for CalFire repeaters, and a few other items. Emergency button, which was required in the bid specs. If you take all those, if you put all those features you need in, you don't have five buttons left over to meet that spec. So if you take the five buttons, you're noncompliant on the other ones. If you put the other ones, then you're noncompliant on the five.
Okay. And, and I did see in, in the packet that we received that there were some emails that you had submitted asking for some clarification on some of the, the specs. Did you feel that any of the requirements were either unclear or somehow put you at a disadvantage in, in the bidding process?
The, the five channel was. That's a proprietary specification to, to Kenwood, and so is the voice annunciation. So that makes the bid proprietary right there with those two features. The voice annunciation was an option, not a requirement. The 512 channels, I'm attributing, you know, if you look at the bid specs, they're pretty atrocious. For anybody that went out and put together a bid, there's no transmitter receiver specifications. There's nothing that tells you the quality of the radio. All you're asking for is a, is a 50-watt radio, it's a mobile, it has 512 channels, and it does this, this, and this. There was no transmitter receiver specs, which are always in bid specifications, always. That tells you what's inside the radio and how quality it is. Anybody can make a mil-spec radio, but can they all do .25, 2.5 microvolts of sensitivity? No. .35, maybe. So the inside of the radio is what tells you what the quality is, and then, of course, you got the options and things like that. So I attributed the 512 channels because that, if you look at that bid, the way that that bid was laid out, it's exactly, it's just a copy off the back of a Kenwood brochure. That's the bid spec. Usually, a bid spec's about five pages for these kind of radios. So these are right off the back of the Kenwood brochure. So I attributed the lack of experience to the 512 channels. People don't know that they don't need 512 channels, or maybe they've never thought about it. Think about it. I've got it all right here for you. There's your channel plan. That's for the whole, that's for the whole Tactical County, or the San, San Bruno and the San Mateo County, 43 channels. State of California Fire Scope, 83 channels. That's a, that's 126 channels. Why do you need 512? Why won't a radio that's 256 channels work? Give you 130 left over.
Michael, anything else? Any questions? Mr. O'Leary?
The only comment in writing that I took personal offense to was when Mr. Williams said that an accountant wasn't qualified to do brain surgery, and I, I dispute that.
Sanitation worker.
Sanitation worker.
To your, real quick, if you made a comment that you wanted to meet with city people, quote, and you were unable to.
Yes, I made several calls to Mr. Telly's.
Could you be specific to who you did not talk to or meet with? I know you said meet, but I want to understand and assure, uh, understanding, you're saying you did not have, you had communication?
Yes.
Okay. Verbally as well as written?
Yes.
Okay. But you wanted to have a specific meeting, and that's what you're saying wasn't?
Yes, I, I left several voicemails for Mr. Telly's and several emails over the course of the three months because he had the, you had the gas explosion and all, and so everybody was quite hectic. And I did manage to talk to him once for about three minutes, and then a fire call, and he goes, "Yeah, yeah, we need to talk and sit down and find out why you're, why you bid what you bid and what it's all about." And then a fire call came in, and he was gone, he goes, "I'll call you back," and that's the last I ever heard from him. And I left several more calls after that. I talked to Mr. O'Leary when he was doing the review, and I said, "Let's get together. Let me show you how my radio is compliant with these specifications and the intent." But that never happened either. So nobody ever took me up on my offer, which is really kind of strange that nobody wanted to talk about the radios.
And I want to be clear too, because I know that you were asking for some special meetings when it came to this, of course, under our municipal code, this is the form in which we have this type of appeal. The other thing is you sent to four members of the City Council asking for us to call a special meeting under municipal code, which three of us can do. Unfortunately, when you do that, we can't respond and coordinate that because that's in violation of the Brown Act. So that's why, and I just want that clear because I don't want you to, to assume, because I talked to our city attorney to get clarification and, and do that, because I know you wanted the mayor to call it, and that didn't seem to work, so then you went to the four of us, trying to get us to call a special meeting by three of us calling that. And, and we can't coordinate our efforts like that because that is in violation of the, of the Brown Act. So I just wanted that to be understood and clear too.
Yeah, and I didn't understand, because it didn't say in the regulations or anything about that, so, but he did clear that up with me about two days later.
Just, just so you're...
But I'd like to have for a special meeting now, if need be.
Mr. O'Leary, any more comments?
Just, just very quickly, Mr. Mayor.
One more thing, Jim, before, before we go, Irene.
Oh, no, to the chief, I want to ask some questions.
Go ahead, Jim. Chief?
I'm sorry if anyone interrupted me. I, I'm very curious, and I didn't see it in here, so, and, but maybe I missed it. Where did the qualifications or the specifications for the radios come from? And was that a coordinated effort between the other fire agencies and districts and cities?
You're exactly right. The specifications were pulled together by all four agencies and their, their personnel in each of those.
Okay, so you all sat down and said, "This is what we want, this is what we need," or, and then are the other cities getting the same radios? So all the cities are getting the same radios?
Yes.
Or the intent is to get the same radios? Okay. And then did, I wasn't clear with Mr. O'Leary, the state had some specifications that we need to follow to get grant money? You said something about if we don't do something, we'll lose the FEMA money?
This, the city has been, been awarded a grant on behalf of the four agencies, including San Bruno, a grant from the federal, from, from FEMA.
Okay.
That will cover 80% of the cost of the radios for the four agencies. We were the lead agency in submitting the grant.
Okay. So I don't understand the connection between the specifications of what we need and the grant money. Are you saying they say you have to have these things, and then if you don't do them?
Can I try?
Yes.
May I? Okay. And just, just one, one comment on the specifications, I guess my observation is that the specifications call for very robust radios. These are not bottom of the line. I mean, they are high-quality, or they're requiring high-quality radios with a number of safety features. But as the chief indicated, these specifications were developed by the four agencies, and we needed as far, for, for the, for the application of FEMA, that all the radios needed to be the same. So the four agencies came together, there were some agencies on some of the specifications felt very strongly that they needed to be included. And I'm not to suggest that the San Bruno Fire Department, for each one of them, felt that that was, but as a group, these were the safety and operational features that the four agencies agreed upon as meeting their, meeting their, their needs. So the notice for bidders makes reference to both the mobile and portable radios must be P-25 compliant. The specifications themselves say they, say the radios shall be P-25 compliant. The City Council, back in July, passed a resolution for the city to submit the grant on behalf of the four agencies, and I'd like to read the first two wherethes of that, of that resolution. The first one says, "Whereas the Federal Communications Commission will require all public safety agencies to switch from, from wideband to narrow-bound radios and P-25 compliance by January 1, 2013. And whereas San Mateo County Fire Agencies are tentatively planning to be in compliance in 2011, a regional grant was submitted on behalf of the four, of the four agencies." So back in July, there was an acknowledgement that these radios were going to be P-25 compliant. The guidance for federal grant programs, when the application was submitted, the guideline reads, "All digital, all new digital voice systems must be compliant with Project 25, P-25 suite of standards." So Battalion Chief Tayis, from, from the beginning, understood that these radios needed to be P-25 compliant, and that is what he has consistently said. The models, as, as Mr. Williams indicated, the, the models of radio bid by Williams USA are P-25 upgradable. At a reported savings, his bid is, according to the written documents, are about $1,700 less per unit. Because they are upgradable, I would suggest rather than compliant. Mr. Williams, again, argues that the, that, that upgradable units meet the letter and intent of the specifications. I don't see how this can be when an additional $1,700 needs to be spent in order to reach, reach P-25 compliant. Mr. Williams further argued that in an email prior to, to the bid deadline from Battalion Chief Tayis, that the radios must be P-25 capable, was the word that, that the chief used, led Williams to bid their upgradable unit. I, I can only say that Chief Tayis intended to reiterate that the units must be P-25 compliant. The word he used capable means having the attributes required for performance. The radios bid by Williams USA do not have the attributes to be P-25 compliant and could only become so at an additional cost of about $1,700. Regarding the, the 500 channels, the higher number of channels allows for expansion of the system as well as compatibility with other, with other agencies in the county. There are two other agencies that currently operate 512-capacity radios in the county. The two other items that, that Mr. Williams referred to was the, the five-channel push button and the voice annunciation capability. These two features, again, were identified by the group of agencies as safety features that these departments felt were necessary for, for their operation. I admit I don't have the 37 years of experience of, in radio that Mr. Williams refers to. My understanding is that these two features are not proprietary for the Kenwood product... My understanding is that these two features are not proprietary for the Kenwood product, that it is a feature of that product, but there are other radio products in the marketplace that also feature or offer both of those capabilities. Again, I would just say the combined safety and operational requirements for the four agencies are reflected in the bid specifications. And again, the question to the council tonight and the question to the finance department when they made their determination, I believe the question before the city manager in making having the hearing with Mr. Williams was a determination, is the bid responsive to the specifications? Just in closing, over in the far back of the room is Mr. Darryl Jones. Mr. Jones has had and has, in some instances, contract with agencies in San Mateo County as a consultant for communications. In the process, I asked Mr. Jones to look at the specifications and to look at the bid submitted by Williams USA. And if you have an interest, he can answer for himself. I believe he would say that in his opinion, the bid submitted by Williams USA does not meet the specifications that were part of this bid. And I'd be glad that the chief to answer any other questions you have.
Good. Any questions of the chief or Mr. O'Leary?
To the chair, yes. Mr. O'Leary, I mean, it's, Mr. Williams makes a very compelling case. But then there is a number six in your findings in your letter. It's just as compelling because it says, a bidding party shall not dictate the requirements. What I'd like to know is that, I think you've made it clear what P-25 compliant is. It means that whatever rate, if we have a P-25 compliant radio, it will qualify when these guidelines take place, either this year or 2013. No, sir. Upgradable, I understand, that's not, and capable, I can understand that. I guess what, not knowing technically, you know, what's going on with these types of pieces of equipment, can this agency set these specs, even though there's going to be debate amongst other providers, service providers or equipment providers, can the agency set specs and stick by them, whether or not they're viable or not? That's my question.
City attorney.
Agencies do it all the time. I mean, you do it with respect to every public works project you ever have. We do it with respect to all of our purchasing. You know, from day one, I think staff's opinion has been, Mr. Williams' argument is with the specs. And he just has a different opinion as to what we should have required. But, you know, and he's admitted that with the P-25 and with the 51250. So yes, we can set whatever specs we want. I mean, the specs could even be higher than what's set here if we wanted to.
My last comment would be to reiterate what Councilmember O'Connell said. Do, does in any way this bid with our specs affect the grant?
The specs were submitted as part of the application. And I read to you the requirement that the radios be P-25 compliant. We have verbal confirmation from FEMA, a FEMA representative, that the radios must be P-25 compliant. We attempted here in the short period, or the holiday here, to get written confirmation of that and we were not able to get it in writing. But Joe Tayis did receive verbal confirmation that the radios must be P-25 compliant.
At the risk of that not being P-25, at the risk of awarding a contract that is P-25 capable or P-25 upgradable, we could stand to lose?
Well...
Lose the grant or have the grant in question.
I guess I would only say, I mean, Mr. Williams makes the case that P-25 capable is P-25 compliant. I mean, I don't agree with that, you know, so I don't know what...
Well, I wouldn't want FEMA to disagree either.
But, I mean, I think FEMA, the FEMA grant for these agencies anticipates that the radios will be P-25 compliant.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. So getting back to the P-25, P-25, from what I've read and was able to understand, is a digital infrastructure for radio communications. Something that we don't currently have in place. And I think in the battalion chief's email, he responded that he wanted the radios to be compliant, yet out of the box, not using P-25. So clearly, it's something we're not going to use. Immediately. And from Mr. Williams' comments, it's something that would be very expensive for us to upgrade to if we decided we were going to go that route. And also indicated that perhaps that's a requirement that would only be required for federal agencies, even though the federal grant would state that everyone needs to be compliant, they would likely not force a local agency to be on that bandwidth. So, I mean, it's almost like the whole digital television thing. If you have a box, you get digital. If you don't have it, you don't. So clearly, if we had a digital infrastructure, we would need that. We don't have the digital infrastructure, so it sounds like we don't really need it. And so to me, the difference between compliant and compatible, or whatever the other terms were, seems...
Capable.
Thank you. Seems more like semantics because we know we're not going to use it anyway. Again, I know that the grant has language in there that says that these things have to be included and that's how they ended up in the spec. But being that we're not going to use it, from a functionality standpoint, it seems like we're almost splitting hairs on how these things are going to work. Out of the box, we're not going to be using it anyway. We didn't get a copy of the grant requirements in our packet, so I'm wondering, and I just wanted to reiterate, I think you did say this, but the P-25 requirement is the only requirement in our specification that came from that, from the grant requirement?
The specifications, the proposed specifications at the time were included in the grant application. It's my understanding that the only one that, of the specifications that I would detail as required was my understanding of the P-25 compliant requirement.
Okay. And you did mention that there are other agencies using the five hundred and twelve channel radios, but are they using the full five hundred and twenty-five channels that are available to them or?
I don't believe they're using five hundred and twelve. They're, I mean, again, my point only is that I think Mr. Williams said there's no one in the area that is using a radio with that capacity. And I was only pointing out that two agencies in San Mateo County alone use radios or require radios that have that capacity.
Okay. Maybe they have deeper pockets than we do.
I might just add that I don't think the difference between the five hundred and twelve channels and two hundred and fifty-six channels is a significant cost difference in the radios. And again, as even Mr. Williams, I think, pointed out, the real cost difference in the bid, I mean, the difference between Mr. Williams' bid and the other three bidders, or the three bids that received, is really this issue of P-25 compliant and that variation. I mean, I would agree that I think that's the price difference in his bid.
Okay. And to address the point of which specifications may or may not make the different options a sole source, of all of the, I think there were three bids that came in, the other two met all of the specifications that were put out?
Actually, the second bidder, one of the requirements stipulated in the bill, in the bid was that the bidder needed to submit sufficient literature with their bid to allow the review of responsiveness and to be sure that the bid met the city's bid specifications and requirements. The second bidder, the one immediately above Mr. Williams USA, was for a Motorola unit and they did not submit any literature to allow us to analyze for compliance. And so from the finance department's perspective, that bid was, would also be found non-responsive and would be passed. And the next, both of the next two bidders, both bid Kenwood equipment. So aside from the point that Mr. Williams would make about they're overcompliant, I believe those two bids do meet the specifications.
Okay. And Mr. Williams also mentioned a non-sparking feature on the ICOM radios that's optional but not included in the Kenwood bid. Is that something that was addressed at all in the specifications that we put out? And if not, is it desirable?
I don't believe it was included in the specifications. And no comment of mine is to say anything negative about Mr. Williams' equipment or the ICOM equipment. You know, I'm sure it's very good equipment and it may have some features that are different and are very good and helpful and safety features. Again, the point is, it simply wasn't part of our specifications. And when the initial review on the part of the city manager I conducted, I didn't look at additional features. The question I was trying to answer is, did the bid meet the specifications as we submitted?
Okay. All right. And just one final comment. I, you know, just to throw this out there, I didn't really agree with Mr. Williams' analogy, but I think you'd make a great brain surgeon. I think, I think...
Looks like it.
You can be the first. No, thanks. Yeah, I think there might be some opportunities where we're actually leveraging the various vendors and maybe not just a single vendor, but maybe a subset of vendors to supplement our knowledge and our, the depth of our knowledge into some of those products. Because yes, I don't think any of us can be experts in everything. And leveraging some of that expertise in even our upfront in developing the specs might be useful.
Thank you. To the chair. Chief, how many years have you been with one department or another, your career?
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two years. So you would say you have some experience in radios?
I like to push the button and talk, yeah.
Okay, good. So give me your assessment and view, because to me, what we're here for and is about is the specifications. That's what this appeal is about. I mean, I can tell you that this floor is better than that floor, but in essence, if you've specified this is the floor you want, I'm using my analogy for me, then that's what I'm supposed to give you specs on. So to me, it's about, are the specs and specifications, have they been met for what we're asking for? What FEMA, who's up to going to pay eighty percent, or is, would be paying eighty percent for these four agencies? We know we certainly have been denied by FEMA before, so I want to make sure we are compliant. So in your opinion, on the specifications, can you tell me a little bit about those as far as what it meets, what it doesn't? Is this a device and apparatus that would be beneficial to the public safety?
Well, again, this was a collaboration between four agencies who developed these specifications. And I think, you know, in our discussions with Mr. Jones, I don't think these specifications are over the top. I think they're high-quality units that we're looking for. And I think the one thing we haven't talked about, in this county, we look interoperability. You know, so this puts four agencies with the same equipment, interchangeable if need be, and compatible. So I mean, that's one of the focuses of the entire FEMA grant. You know, Mr. Williams is not incorrect on the P-25. The direction on the FEMA grant was we refer to the SafeCom. And as part of that, unless we could demonstrate that P-25 was a detriment to the organizations or communications, then that would be included in the bid specification. And that's what Chief Tayis went ahead and did. So the five hundred and twelve, I understand, you know, we might not use all five twelve, but we certainly have expandable capabilities. You know, we're going through, CAL fires going through their changeover right now. So who knows what might happen down the road? So, you know, in Mr. Jones' experience, we do have agencies in this county with five hundred and twelve channel capability also. So, you know, San Bruno wasn't a, the voice enunciation wasn't a San Bruno, we didn't need it or want it necessarily, but other agencies did. Other agencies do use it in this county. Some of them like it regardless of Mr. Williams' personal opinion. I mean, so I think we're in line and this is not over the top specifications at all.
This project was obviously started and was, began prior to September 9th. And unfortunately, we had a disastrous situation that all agencies had to respond to this town and communicate. And we've learned some things from that night as it unfolded in this town. With that knowledge that we have today, do we still feel the specifications and the product that we have here before us is best suited, not only for our agency, the four agencies, and for going forward so we can be compatible, communicate, and be most effective and efficient for our citizenry and for the public safety personnel?
I think I could best respond to that by saying that prior to his retirement, I did pose that very question to Chief Tayis when I interviewed him. And as you said, these specifications, the bids were actually, the due date was August 25th, so a couple of weeks before September 9th. And so the specifications were, you know, developed well before that. I did, I did ask Chief Tayis if, as a result of September 9th, if there was anything that he wished were different in the specifications. And he said no. He said that this is what the department needs.
And then, I know you kept, we kept alluding to Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones, can you come up to the mic? If you're willing to. I just want to have another, to me, I like getting a well-rounded base of information and experts. Mr. Jones, how many years of experience do you have?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Darryl Jones. I'm contractually responsible for design and engineering of the fire communication system throughout the county of San Mateo. And I have about thirty-two years of experience in various phases of public safety communications. I was not involved in preparation of the bid specifications that are in question. I've had a chance to briefly review them. I am thoroughly aware of the benefits and the downside of P-25. And one thing I'd like to call to your attention is that it's extremely unlikely that the fire service in San Mateo County will ever have a P-25 radio system. However, the fire service throughout the state of California, in fact, throughout the United States, depends critically on mutual aid and the ability of a firefighter, a fire engine, a fire truck, and the radios that are associated with those firefighters to go out of jurisdiction. And by having a radio that's capable of numerous channels, it's not uncommon for, on a mutual aid incident, if you remember back when our apparatus had to go to Southern California to assist with the firefighters, or the wildland fires there, that depending on where you go in the state, over the next five years, I believe that we will start to see more agencies using P-25 radios. And if a San Bruno, or San Mateo, or Millbrae firefighter has to respond out of the area, especially into US Forest Service jurisdiction, there is a possibility that those radios will have to be programmed. will have to be programmed, once they get on scene, to operate in P-25 mode. However, I don't believe it's likely that we will be using P-25 for fire service radios here in San Mateo County, probably ever. But that is a very important distinction or consideration, that when we go out of jurisdiction, we do need to have equipment that's capable of operating in digital mode.
Thank you.
If there are any specific questions I could answer, I'll certainly do my best.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm interested, Marty. Will I have the opportunity to make a comment?
Yeah, I'll let you make a comment. Go ahead, right now. Please tell us your name.
My name is John Singer. My name is John Singer, and I'm a San Mateo County resident. And I own Metro Mobile Communications, also located in San Mateo County for over twenty-five years. And I do have a business interest in this matter. I will say that you don't need thirty-seven years of experience in this industry to understand the difference between a P-25 or digital radio and a non-P-25 or analog radio. So, the bid spec was very clear. It's minimal, I agree. But it says two things on the front face of the document. It says, "With narrow-band capability and P-25 compliant." It's very clear to me that what you were looking to purchase was a P-25 radio, a P-25 digital radio. They're very expensive. Now, I think Mr. Williams' argument is that he has a roughly equivalent product that you can buy from him for half that money, hundred thousand dollars versus roughly two-hundred thousand dollars. But the bid spec is written for P-25 digitally compliant radios. His radio is not digital. It is not P-25 compliant. If you want to buy an analog, non-P-25 compliant radio, there are a lot of radios in the price category of the ones that he's selling that are also very good products. I also only want to add that the City of San Bruno Fire and Central County Fire are already using a version of the Kenwood P-25 radio, and they're very happy with it. It has proven to be a very exceptional product. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? I'll let you just close it up real quick.
Okay, I just wanted to respond to some of the things that Mr. O'Leary brought up. And just so everybody knows, all radios are pretty much, they all talk and listen. It's like a cellphone. There's just features different on them. So, having an ICOM radio and a Kenwood radio next to each other in the same truck, there's no difference. They all talk and listen the same way. So, don't think that one's different than the other, and they can't co-mingle. They can. Number one is, Mr. O'Leary said in his report that the no-abandon mandate of January 1st of 2013 is correct by the FCC, but he also stated that P-25 compliance isn't, and that is incorrect. There is no, and I repeat, no, and Mr. Jones, I'm sure, can answer the same question. There is no mandatory mandate, or any mandate at all, by the FCC for cities, counties, or states. Only the federal government, period. Interfacing with U.S. Forest Service engines, they, one of the features of P-25 is its dual mode. It works in conventional, like you're on now, and it works in P-25 at the same time, programmable by channel. They have your fire channels, they have CAL Fire channels, they've got everybody's fire channels. When you show up, everybody in their department goes to the analog channels. Not an issue. When you go on CAL Fire, they reprogram your radio for you. Nobody else does, they do. And they wipe out all the channels that are in there, and they put their channels in. So, 512 channels is a moot point. There aren't 512 channels in the state of California, as I've proved with all your channel lists from the state of California and with the Bay Area here. The reason why some people have 512 channels is because that's all Kenwood makes. They don't make a ten-channel radio or a fifty-channel radio. Same with ICOM, same with Motorola. They all pick a channel amount that they think is sufficient for the industry, and that's what they make. There's no, it's 512, that's it. Or it's 256, that's it. So, just because they have 512 channels, that's because that's all they could get. They couldn't get anything less. On the five-button programming, and also the other agencies that have all these different features, and the P-25 mandate, I would challenge Mr. O'Leary to show me. Show me the specifications, show me the law, the federal grant, show me anything you've got that tells you that the federal government's mandating what you buy. They're not. One thing I will say, though, that he's correct on, and this is a big misnomer, the state of California has fallen for it, and a lot of public safety agencies around the country have fallen for it, and I've been bringing this up to many people, and they've realized it, and bought the radios that I'm selling, or the competitors' equivalent. That is, is that on a P-25 federal grant, depends on who you get it from and what agency in the federal government, sometimes they make you buy a P-25 radio. You don't have any choice. If you want that money, you've got to spend three thousand dollars for a radio instead of eleven hundred dollars for an analog radio that can be upgraded to it. They make you do it, even though you'll never use it, which, of course, is a waste of everybody's money, since there's no mandate for it. If you folks go digital, everybody in this county and everywhere and around the Bay Area is going to have to go digital. You can't talk to them. And their consortium, for here in San Jose, that's millions and millions of dollars. He's already stated that nobody would probably ever do it. The state of California doesn't have any money to do it, and it's not mandated, they're not gonna.
Okay, we've got to wrap it up here pretty quick.
Okay, so, all I'm saying is that, depending on the grant, the federal government sometimes says, quote-unquote, "It has to be full P-25," some say just "P-25." So, it's open for debate. If, in fact, it's full P-25, then the email that I got back from Mr. Telly stating that, hey, it could be capable, was the wrong thing for him to say, and that led me to bid what I bid. Can I bid a full P-25? Absolutely. Can I bid Kenwood? Absolutely. So, at the very least, you know, if we've got all these semantics going around, and people not understanding what the bid specs are and what P-25 is, maybe it ought to be, well, I'd like to get the bid award, but maybe it ought to be rebid. I don't know.
All right. Thank you very much. You are...
I'm Bill Bauer. I represent the Kenwood factory.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll be very brief. I'm Bill Bauer.
Say that again through the microphone, please.
I'm, my name is Bill Bauer. I'm a fifteen-year resident of San Bruno, and I represent the Kenwood factory for the manufacturer of the Kenwood radios. And I'll just make two brief points after a long dialogue, a lot of this over many of our heads. I'll just simply say that if the big one hit tomorrow, the federal agencies that would assist us would show up here talking on digital radios. They will bring their own digital infrastructure with them, and it's important, with the experience we had here in the city, where sixty homes are impacted, you can imagine the chaos. Every one of our, all of our heroes in the city were pressed to the limits addressing that. You can only imagine, in a much more scalable, large disaster, how important it will be to communicate with our federal agencies who will be communicating on P-25 radios. Finally, that we do have radios at Kenwood that are P-25 upgradable radios, that are in the same cost category as the ones that are the gentleman who's competing with us for this contract. And should you want those analog radios that are upgradable to P-25, that don't adhere to the specs that four agencies set, we have those radios available.
Thank you very much. Okay. Discussion? Action? I'd just like to say a couple of words. I think the key for me was what Mr. Williams said a number of times, in my opinion. And I don't believe we set these specifications out to ask for opinions. We set them out to ask for a specific product that complied to certain specifications. Specifications that were fairly well-laid out. It's, you know, I work in a construction industry, and I deal with bids and specs all the time. And it's fine for me to try to anticipate in the future what may happen, and what I might be able to get away with, and what I might be able to save the owner. But sure as hell, I go in from the very beginning with plans and specs. Otherwise, they just throw you out. So, I think it's just a real basic question of, did you bid the specifications? No, I don't believe you did. I'll let the council speak. Any action? Michael?
One comment I would make would be that, I believe he made a valid, Mr. Williams made a valid point in that, in the email from Battalion Chief Tels, it did say that he did not want it to be digital, out of the box, which, to me, meant it wasn't a hard and fast requirement. And if the digital radios are, in fact, digital out of the box, then that was a little...
Misleading.
Misleading.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah. No, go ahead. I was just going to say that I think it comes down to, this is about the specs. That's what this is about. And I think, Mr. Williams indicated, he does have a radio that would meet the specs, and you chose not to bid that. I'm somewhat with the mayor in that, when somebody asks for specifications, that's what should be adhered to. That's what these four agencies came together, that's what the professionals have provided. And, you know, maybe I'm just sentimental, because what happened three months ago. But when I stood there and watched it unfold, and watched those that needed everything at their disposal in action for what they had to do and what our residents suffered, I'm not willing to take, in my opinion. I want things to be specific. I want things to be assured, and I want specifics to be met, because I want to ensure that whatever happens in the future, we are prepared.
Do the Chair. I believe it's a motion to deny the appeal. Would that be appropriate?
Yes.
I make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second.
Motion, second, to deny the appeal based on the information in the staff report.
Correct.
On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item 10E, receive a report and provide direction related to adoption of 2010 building code updates.
I'll be giving the presentation, but Gary Lepore, he's our technical expert, so he could answer any questions that you have following this report as well. Every three years, the California Building Standards Commission updates the California building codes. And there's a number of codebooks that comprise the California Building Code series. They include things like the California Residential Code, the California Energy Code, the California Plumbing Code, and there's about a dozen of them that comprise the whole California Building Code series. When the requirements in these codes change, the cities are required to implement these changes. However, cities are able to amend the code if, based on local climatic, geographical, or topographical situations. But these amendments must be approved by the Building Standards Commission prior to implementation. In the past code cycle, three years ago, San Bruno did adopt several local amendments. Those were mostly related to our proximity to the San Andreas Fault, as well as our proximity to SFO. These included commercial sprinkler requirements, airport noise windows, roof requirements, peel requirements, and the council members, the time limit ordinance for building codes, building permits. Although staff is proposing no other major policy-type amendments this time around, passed amendments will be carried forward. There will also be some smaller technical requirements that'll also be proposed as the, in the overall code amendment package. However, from time to time, the state also adds a code book. And that's the subject of this report. The state is adding a green building codes book, becoming the first state in the nation to have green building standards. What is unique about this code book is that the state is allowing the city to adopt tiers of green building standards. So, there's a mandatory tier that goes into effect no matter what. But the cities are also allowed to adopt a Tier One or a Tier Two. And each gets incrementally, there's more standards involved with that, as well as additional energy savings as a result. And ultimately, whether to adopt these tiers is a policy choice of each individual city council in California. It does not require the approval of the California Building Standards Commission. So, I'll go over a couple things, a couple of the requirements for the mandatory, as well as the Tier One or Tier Two. One thing, important thing to remember is that this green building code only applies to, for new construction. It doesn't apply to any remodels or additions, only brand-new construction of homes. So, a few of the requirements that would be as the mandatory level. There requires both a stormwater plan, as well as a surface water management plan for all single-family homes, so this is something that is new. There's increased energy requirements, energy efficiency requirements. There is, one big thing is a requirement for a twenty percent reduction in indoor water use. The mandatory code also institutes construction, as well as indoor quality requirements. So, Tier One would be the step up from that. Some of the things that are required in Tier One is additional topsoil protection. One interesting thing is a twenty percent requirement for permeable paving on-site. That's something that we have within our residential design guidelines, but it's something that's also replicated within this Tier One code. One important thing is exceeding the California energy standards by fifteen percent. There's additional landscape and irrigation requirements. Also, a requirement to have ten percent recycled content be used for construction materials. And finally, a sixty-five percent reduction of waste requirement. If you take it a step further and go up to Tier Two, there's now a thirty percent permeable paving requirement. You need to exceed California energy codes by thirty percent. A number of other requirements, including the seventy-five percent reduction in construction waste. Of course, these are, there's going to be costs involved for all of these, and as you go up for each tier, there's additional short-term costs. Of course, they also lead to long-term savings. But in terms of the short-term costs, if you're just to update, if you're just to go with the mandatory code, there's probably about a five-thousand-dollar cost increase over what, how you build a code now. But that's mandatory. And this is for, if you're building your standard twenty-two-hundred-square-foot new home. If you're going up to the Tier One requirements, you're probably spending about a thousand dollars to two thousand dollars more for the energy code portion, and about ten to twenty thousand dollars more for the overall requirements. And finally, Tier Two, you're going up to about twenty thousand to forty thousand dollars more than the mandatory requirements. So, that's the cost side. Obviously, the benefit side, there's huge environmental benefits, especially when you look at the cumulative impact of this being adopted over all the cities of California, and if California usually being the leader in environmental, other states will follow. But the benefit is range from energy efficiency to reduction in water use, and, of course, recharging the city's groundwater system through the use of permeable paving. And it should be noticed, as we note in the staff report, that these costs will begin, will drop over time. As these requirements take place, there'll be additional suppliers in the market, which will drive down costs and end up for savings with the homeowners as, over time. And the break-even point for all of these, it's hard to estimate an exact break-even point, but it's typically about ten years' time. So, regarding a recommendation, staff is recommending that the city council adopt the Tier One measures. As you see from your staff report, these are consistent with a number of other cities within San Mateo County, and we're recommending these for a few reasons. First is the, within the general plan, the city council did provide staff with direction to always look at what environmentally sustainable options there are within the, within building standards. And we feel that the Tier One standards do take a leadership role in this, within San Mateo County. Also, from a contractor, a business owner, and a homeowner standpoint, these are some, the most consistent with other cities within San Mateo County. You've heard us talk about removing the moving target before, and this would do it by being the most consistent with other cities within San Mateo County. And finally, while the Tier Two requirements might be the best thing for the long run, I think it's the best bet to let the market catch up with these, so that product prices drop, and we could eventually implement these. What we don't want to do is put ourselves in a competitive disadvantage with other cities by adopting these Tier Two requirements, and some developments could pass us by, because the costs associated with them are just more in the short term. So, with that, I could take any questions, but our recommendation is to adopt the Tier One requirements.
Questions of staff?
Do the Chair.
Michael?
Do these requirements place any conditions on the builders? Do they have to be certified, or anything that would cause, might put one builder at a disadvantage over another?
I could try to answer this and see if Gary needs to follow up. My answer is, they don't have to have certain qualifications. What they do is that they have to propose plans that are to the specifications of the code. So, if they don't have a qualified architect, a qualified builder that's not able to build it, they're not going to pass plan check, or they're not going to pass their building inspection. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Gary?
Thank you. Councilmember, there are certain requirements for subcontractors to have certain qualifications. There will be duct testing requirements, and so there has to be HERS, Raiders, they have to have a certain certification in order to test the duct system for a new gas furnace. So, there may be those types of qualifications. But generally, Aaron is correct. As far as the general contractor, it would be just a regular general contractor that wouldn't have to have necessarily any additional knowledge... wouldn't have to have necessarily any additional knowledge than what they have now.
Okay. One more question. What, what amount of effort would be required for your department to get up to speed on being able to oversee this, and I suppose all the review committees would also have to be up to speed on this stuff?
There's, there is gonna be a learning curve, and I think there's a learning curve anytime there's a code cycle, and maybe even more at this time, but I don't think the learning curve will be anymore going from the mandatory code to the tier one requirements, 'cause we'll be learning it at the same time. But there is gonna be a lot of references to codebooks, a lot of trainings that we have to attend in order to learn all of this.
Any idea on the overall cost to get us there over the next year?
That's hard to estimate. We're, we're able to do it at this point within the building department training budget that we have, and there's been a lot of focus on training in Samhain County for this.
Okay. Thank you.
Erin, the, this'll kick in when exactly?
Well, the mandatory codes are going into effect January 1st. If we adopt this, it'll go into effect 30 days after the second reading, so we're probably looking at sometime in late February.
So we'll probably learn a whole lot with the Glenview rebuild then?
Absolutely, absolutely. And one thing I forgot to note, especially related to that, is there, there is a learning curve. So what we're doing right now is we're talking to a couple nonprofit groups that are specifically focused on green building techniques for two reasons. The first is to hopefully get a grant either through PG&E or another entity to help with some design assistance for these homeowners and architects that are proposing new homes in the Glenview area. The second is trying to set up a grant program so that there perhaps could be additional energy savings and aim towards something like lead requirements that the homeowners could take advantage of at no cost to them.
Ken?
Through the chair. I've got over 30 years of experience in this, and I've been, and I've been through 10 building codes in this, in that, possibly in that state. And what concerns me about this new code, and really, the only big change that's happened in the 30 years really has been energy compliance, insulation, you know, and glazing things. And since that time, since that's been developed, and I see it coming now, the documents have doubled, tripled. Not only are you providing drawings for a design for a new home, you are providing almost a booklet of energy compliance forms, and in turn, now the state wants, and the building departments want those, want those documents on the drawings. So it's, it's paperwork. And I only ask, because, you know, that's the livelihood, I only ask that, that the building departments throughout this county, you know, coordinate, and, and our plan checkers, you know, make it very clear of what the requirements are, what they want. Because there's nothing fun about submitting, you know, submitting documents for a billing permit and getting numerous pages of plan check comments stating, "You need to do this, you need to do this, you need to do this," you know, and then having to resubmit things and time, time goes on. So it's just another stage, another layer of what needs to be done to comply and to approve a project, and as long as it's known what to do, and it's, and, and I appreciate what San Bruno Building Department, Planning Department has done in the last couple of years as far as providing information and guidance, pamphlets, templates, whatever. And I hope, you know, we step it up now, because this is, this is a big one. This is a big change, so that's my comment.
Yeah, I agree, and that's actually something that Gary's, I think, done really well since coming on board a few years ago, is getting that information and setting the expectations early on in the process, so that people aren't caught off guard. So we'll have to update a lot of the pamphlets, we'll have to update our residential construction guide that provides a summary of what the building code is.
I've, I've been very facetious in the last 10 years, saying that eventually, we're going to submit drawings and a code book, you know, with, with our, with our plans. Because that's basically what we're doing, is not only, you know, providing a design, but justifying that design with the specific sections of the code, proving that, you know, we're in compliance, and it's, it's tedious.
All right. Are we in agreement to recommend tier one?
I agree with that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
You have your direction. Item 10F, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with RMC, water and environment in an amount not to exceed $309,420 for the development of a sewer master plan. Clara?
Honorable mayor, councilmembers, our city own and operates our sewer system in order for us to, in order for us to maximize the efficiency of the system and to minimize the cost achieving that efficiency, it is a industry practice to do through development and update of the master plan. Our previous sewer master plan was developed in 2000, in 2000. Since then, all capacity improvement project recommended as part of our master plan were already implemented. Right now, the city is, and our whole sewer system, is under administrative action review initiated by the Regional Water Board and legal action initiated by the baykeepers. Reason why even is more critical than any other time to reassess and to our strategies to maximize the efficiency of our system and to develop the best strategies to optimize and improve our outcomes. This proposed master plan is, in essence, will do just that. We'll evaluate the system performance, and we'll recommend system improvement needed, and also we'll recommend a capital improvement plan as necessary. In the, in October of this year, the city went out for, with a request for proposals to 40 consultants. The city received five proposals from the consultants. The proposed cost for the master plan development ranged between $187,000 and $335,000. Based on the first level of selection process, three consultant firms were interviewed, RMC, Vestios, and Winsler &amp; Kelly. Based on the qualification of the consultant and their approach and understanding of our system and our specific need at this time, RMC was recommended by the selection team. Based on our discussion with the consultant, the timeframe for the project would be to start the flow monitoring as soon as possible. This is one critical element of this master plan development, to start the flow monitoring before the rainy season is over, and to have the final, the master plan developed by March of 2012. This timeframe in our assessment and this time would meet our need. The total negotiated, proposed dollar amount for the development of the master plan would be $309,420, and this dollar amount is, we, our budget request in our 2010, 2011 CIP budget, provide enough funding from the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the cost of this project. My recommendation for you is to authorize the city manager to, and to execute the contract with RMC for not to exceed dollar amount of $309,000. If you have, have any question, I would be very happy to answer.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. The last time we had this done was in 2000. With this and final work being done and approved, it would be 2012. Is there a requirement or mandate from the state as how often this needs to be done?
It is not a mandate, how often should be done. It's a best management practice, you, you, depending on the system and the system need. Many agencies, they are updating each, each five years, but certainly, that is just how, I said in the beginning, best management practice is not a mandate. Having that said, based on our discussion so far with the Regional Water Board and also with Baykeeper, it is my expectation that in order for us to meet the requirement of the CDO, which will be finalized by the Regional Water, Regional Water Board, will be mandatory for us, and will need to be developed, the sewer master plan update.
So what is the best management practice?
Correct.
No, what is, is it, okay, this will be 12 years. Is that it? Should it be five years? Should it be seven years, eight years? What would you suggest is the best management practice for this?
How I said, depend on case-by-case basis, depending how much recommendation in your prior master plan was made, if those projects were implemented, if any new information, knowing the system, do you think that needs to be included in the master plan? Certainly, the best management practice is to update at least each 10 years, if not each five years.
Thank you.
Michael?
Through the chair. I'm, I'm looking at a tentative cease-and-desist order that has a requirement for a system evaluation and capacity assurance plan. Is that directly related to this?
Yes. It's, they are not calling out master plan, but the capacity assurance plan, SSO reduction plan, and the CIP development, all are basically pieces of the CD or the CDO, which will be developed probably at the end of the process.
Okay. And given what, what, and I haven't seen the 2000 plan, but given what was outlined in that plan, have we addressed all of the concerns that may have been raised in that, if there are any?
In our 2000 master plan, the main focus based on the consenting, the sign between us and the Regional Board was focused on capacity, capacity improvement projects. And even if the master plan made other recommendations, many recommendations, like improving INI with replacing certain section of, not certain section, but the main, the sewer mains, and also to upgrade our pump station, not all of those recommendations were implemented, but the capacity, specific capacity-related improvement projects were implemented from our master plan.
Okay. Now, say, if I were to propose that we postpone this study for another year and use that money instead to address some of the other issues that are proposed in this cease-and-desist order, maybe projects that are remnants of the 2000 plan, and then plan this for, for sometime in the future, this, this tentative order says that their plan would be required by September of 2013, that buys us a little more time. What would you say to that?
I would not be able to meet those time requirement in, included in the draft CDO if I am not proceeding with the development of the flow monitoring and the master plan, no.
Thank you.
Any questions? Member of the public?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I'd like to remind you that, Mr. Mayor, you were at the meeting when Mr. Hill asked, Samhain Hill, asked if the investigation into the San Bruno incident, the sewer lines were worked on tremendously on the Glenview area, and the question was asked, and it was my question that he asked, was the transmission lines checked after all the sewer work was done? So I just advise you that if any sewer, this new sewer work is done near a PG&E gas transmission line, you make sure PG&E gets off their you-know-what and comes there and checks some lines after the work's done, 'cause we don't need another incident like we had in September.
We're very well aware of that, and the report came out today, and one of the, the highlights of the report was, in fact, that that transmission line was not damaged or dented in any way because of any kind of excavation that was done. So I think PG&E and San Bruno are both aware of what happened, obviously, and, and going forward.
Right. I, I had the report sent to me from the NTP myself, too, so, okay, just, just to play it safe, 'cause we don't want it to happen again. It doesn't hurt for them to have somebody come out and look at it after, if there's any sewer work done near their transmission lines.
You make a very good point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ken?
There's no other comments. I'd just like to say that, you know, 15 years ago, this council made, made a commitment to upgrade, consciously upgrade, all the infrastructure, led by Councilwoman O'Connell, and we cynically tried to deal, see why, why she was so interested in dealing with stuff that is unseen. And we've learned over these years that it is, it's an old city, and everything's old, and everything needs to be upgraded. And in 15 years, I believe, we've made, you know, significant improvements, but we're, we're not there yet. And the question asked, can we delay, and, you know, should we do it in five years or something? I think as long as, you know, the, the political question here is, how much do we wanna charge our customers? How much, we've dealt with CIP rates and things, and how many projects that need to be done, and how, how strained do we want our customers to be? And I think over the last 15 years, yes, we've raised rates, you know, and in some cases, we've raised rates significantly, but I think it's prudent, you know, it's been our responsibility to, to make those improvements and pay for those improvements over the course of time. And this, again, I can't believe it's been 10 years, and I think we need to continue that, and especially when we're getting hit legally, so...
I, I just would like to follow up. I think you are absolutely right. Under the council leadership, the city did a, considering the age of our structure, our system, and the problem with our system, the city really did a great job investing in our, both, actually, sewer and water infrastructure. You can see in the result. The SSOs for main, for the sewer mains are decreasing from year to year in the last three years. That is a clear result of the focus what you just mentioned, that the city really invested, invested in our improvement, in the improvement of the system itself.
I'm very proud of it. And with that, I'd like to defer to Councilwoman O'Connell to introduce the resolution.
It's been a long 15 years. I, I too am proud of that we started it and we're continuing it. It's not always... It's not always pleasant to tell your neighbors that you're increasing the water rates or the sewer rates, but I always remind them that if we don't get it fixed, it's all going to collapse, and it won't matter how much water is out there, it won't get to their pipes. So with that, I'd like to introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
No.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. All right. Item 11, we've done item 11 already. Go right to comments from councilmembers. I would just like to say, I'm remiss in not thanking the San Bruno Garden Club for the lovely floral, holiday floral arrangement they supplied for us. So now I'm out of trouble, so that's, that's good. Any other comments from councilmembers?
Through the chair. Not to, and on a, you know, on a note of the budget, but obviously, at the end of the year is about here. If I'm not mistaken, we'll be getting a report back as far as our second quarter or halfway mark for the budget. Obviously, in other communities, they're still grappling with the budget and trying to make cuts and trying to balance it. And I, with all that's happened this last quarter, I don't know when the report's going to come, but I really hope that we look diligently at where we're at and the projection we will be on June 30th. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, next month or thereabout, the budget will start to be worked on for the next budget cycle. So I guess I say that in the sense that I'm just kind of concerned, obviously, sales tax and property tax, obviously, may not be coming in as where we anticipated. So I really want us to take a diligent look at that and prepare and be prepared for what lies ahead.
Any other comments? All right. We're going to go into closed session. Item 13, item A, consider an appointment of city attorney, California Government Code Section 54957, and B, a closed session to confer with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one case, California Government Code Section 54954.5. And we will adjourn this meeting, and I would like to, on, believe on behalf of the entire council, if I may, wish everyone a very happy holiday, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and a very safe one at that. Next regular city council meeting will be held on January 11, 2011, at 7:00 PM, right here at the senior center. Meeting adjourned.